Cut four, ladies and gentlemen, have you heard of that? All right, welcome to the legislature. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Roll call please.
All right, Karen Brady, Jimmy Clark, Chris Wood, and Alan Moore, all approved.
Okay, you've got November and December minutes. Uh, well, that's December minutes, excuse me. Any questions or anything they had on December minutes?
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion approved, do you have a second?
Yep.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call please. Chris Wood?
Aye.
Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Alan Moore?
Karen Brady?
Aye.
Okay, approved. First in twenty twenty three.
First in twenty twenty three. If we could all sign on the last slide, I'd appreciate it.
And for those of you who weren't here at the last council meeting, the minutes will be on Glenwood AR dot net in the morning. Everything that we go over now, every piece of paperwork on that will be, if y'all want to look at anything, it's there, y'all can. Just Glenwood AR dot net right now, we're trying to, we've got the dot com domain name back, but TJ hasn't had a chance to get it all working yet on the dot com, so it's dot net right now. Okay, we've got two months of financials in front of you, November the thirtieth. Be something I spoke in.
You sound like.
No. Couldn't stand it. Did y'all see the? Let me get that laid on your porch.
It did, you're not carrying it by the way.
We all weren't there, so that was left to play under. You?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Y'all got any question on November's financials? You got to cut the budget in there on top of the line I laid at your house. If y'all want to look at anything, we need to look at the, approving the December thirty first budget for last year, because we don't have all the changes in it more so. Now, a motion is second to accept November's balance sheet presented. Roll call. Chris Wood? Alan Moore? Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Karen Brady?
Aye.
By the way, Billy, when we're quickly approving these past stuff, it's just the, basically it's the history of what we did.
This, this money right here, we'll go into budget, that's not money spent yet, y'all got to prove that, but this is money that's spent. Ain't gonna take them the financials back, it's just the way we were. It's how it ended up each month, and then basically another one deal on proving the amended budget. Because it, y'all didn't look at that, but it's where it is too. Anyway, uh, December financials?
What stood out to you on the previous year comparisons that was just kind of crazy?
Well, we just, we spent a lot of maintenance money in the water and service department, and then we spent that extra money on paving that wasn't in the budget. We'll have to discuss that, like a, whatever I have on the sidewalk project, and money's not in next year's budget, we'll have to use it as a reserve, because the budget will balance if we put that in there. So, we'll go over that when we get there, but. And you spent, we knew we were spending more money on maintenance and water and service department, we knew we were spending more money on the street, and y'all approved that before we did it, so. Everything else is pretty much in line. Now, a motion to approve December financials, do you have a second? Roll call. Chris Wood? Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Karen Brady?
Aye.
Alan Moore? Now, if you want to do a lot more looking, this would be the place to look, because this is, this is what everything.
Is this going to last year's end issue as you current?
The first we're gonna do is the twenty twenty three amended budget. So, if y'all got any questions on that, we need to discuss it before we go on. But this is the way we ended up the year. And ever the.
You said twenty two, you mean twenty four?
Well, twenty three is the amended budget. And twenty four is going to be the budget to go through for next, for the year we're in. Just like the fire department, I didn't have anything to do with the budget, that's a lot of expenses there every year. You leave it out of the budget all you want to, that's gotta be paid, it don't need to be out of the budget. It's back in the budget for next year, and of course you spend a tissue, so it's back in the budget. It wasn't in the budget, that's probably the biggest thing that stands out.
The only one I noticed was the, I was looking over at the, look under police, their health concerns, we budgeted twenty two, but we only spent six.
We didn't have offshoot all the time. Now, also, we went back, Karen went back and got the loan where we had the cops grant, and you got Mimes and you got Ingram, were on that cops program. There's seventy thousand dollars that wasn't spent there because we didn't have an officer. So, they agreed, we paid, picked up thirty five thousand dollars in salary in last year, and in the budget tissue, we're going to pay thirty five thousand to those two cops. Thirty five thousand dollars in their salary is coming in from that cops grant, so we're gonna get to spend all the money, they let us go back and gonna spend it, even though we didn't have the cop, we thought we just lost it, but they come back in and said, no, y'all get to use it. So, we put thirty five thousand in last year's budget, and thirty five thousand this year, that was, I guess it was all in last year's budget to begin with, and we didn't spend it, we thought we weren't gonna get to use it, and they come back in and said, do thirty five thousand in December, or try to get it used, they'll get it all used, the thirty five in December, or November and December. So, but, so we can carry that over, but in the budget, I only put thirty five thousand. But whatever that carryover is, you'll see as we go on, that's gonna be additional income in the police department, because you're gonna get, you're gonna get to spend that complete seventy thousand that was left there. Part of it was done in December, and the rest of it will be done, their first salaries will use that money up and be paid out of it. For those two officers will be paid for, out of that money first. Any other questions?
Does the cars? Does all the cars?
Yeah, they got cell phones in every car, yeah, they got.
It's motor roll and all that stuff for the computers to talk back and forth.
The police has got a hot dog, and we're tied into the contract over in the city hall for, it was six years ago, or two years into that, I can't get any, get that adjusted down, it can come way down, but it's.
Is there a bio?
No. You're into that for the five year contract you signed on, and you're two years into it, so you're on year three. Our new phone, our new switch over there that we put in over there, that we upgraded to, it'll handle the phone system. You just gotta buy a phone and put on it, you don't have to buy anything else, the switch is, that switch will handle the phone system. But, we can't do it because we're on the other. It'll probably save you ten dollars a year, maybe more. But I might not be the mayor, because that's, you can't do that till after those four year terms over with for me.
Do we have, do we have our attorney look at it, see what we did?
It's the contract you signed with Windstream, I mean, I guess you got nasty with him, you could probably get out of it, maybe, but. I'm, I'm trying to get all the paperwork together to talk to her, because we've got, we still got stuff turned on that we're paying for, that we're not using. And I've got to go through all that, but we're having a real hard time getting the lady to talk to us, and DJ and I, the last couple of weeks have had a lot going on, and we're gonna get to the bottom of that, we're gonna get rid of the stuff that's not on that contract that we're not using anymore, there's a bunch on there. I don't have much yet, but there's quite a bit on there, so that will go down, but that, the cell phone bill on the police officer's card won't go in, I don't think, I don't think there's anything to do with that. Yes. Uh, you got any of those phones turned on in the police cars that's not being used right now? I think he's already taken care of that.
We've done, we've done same. Hello, you sent it out to us, if there's anybody in the audience asking any questions on any of this, if anybody's looking through this, just give them to them.
If you look at street department income, it will actually come in under budget, with everything on, all the action we did, we still come in, it was in the budget.
We actually done better than I thought we were gonna do, to be honest with you, last year. We had a couple things go our way, on a couple grants, a couple, you know, because we lost, this year we lost the COVID. And we was running on COVID.
You're gonna have, I did not put in next year's budget, the money that's left to pay on the sidewalk projects while the construction going, because over budgeted in this year's budget, so you'll just, whatever was left of that will be in your reserve, and you'll spend that. So, if you see a little bump in numbers there, if it was in, you don't re-put the money in the budget for a second year, it was in there, and we didn't get it all spent or not through, so there may be some money in there that's still, that may hit the budget and that. Some of that, you'll go into, not all of it, but some of that was in last year's budget that didn't get spent. Our chemical bills are up at the water plant, we make more water at the water plant, so. You make more water, you don't have more chemical bills. And chemicals have went way up, way up four years ago, it's doubled.
Oh, I remember when y'all used to drop it us at twenty seven thousand dollars.
And now?
And, uh, what do you have now?
Thirty five thousand. And basically, Brandon, that, I have to reckon depreciation money is just in the savings account, that's not actually, put three hundred forty eight thousand dollars, we had to put in depreciation money, you have to collect and have an appreciation amount. We didn't spend any of that, that's in a, that's in a CD. It shows as an expense, because we make it depreciate your system down, you have to put that money back, but we still actually have all that money sitting in CDs, on that three hundred forty eight thousand. Now, we could come in and need to spend it sometimes, and when we get to where we need to spend it, we can spend it, but it's, it's in the CDs right now, we didn't use any of that last year.
You need a motion?
Do you?
You have to raise the resolution.
You want to read this first?
Gotta read the resolution.
All right, well, the phone part, resolution number twenty four dash oh one, City of Glenwood, approving amendments to the twenty twenty three budget, whereas the city council of the city of Glenwood approved the appropriation of funds for operations for calendar year twenty twenty three, and has previously throughout the year amended the budget to reflect more correctly expenditures and the revenue then, whereas, after reviewing all city account funds, revenues, and expenditures for city department for twenty twenty three, we found that the revenues received did or did not exceed both the budget revenues and the total expenditures for the year. However, in all city departments, some expenses slightly exceeded budgets amounts for the year. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, that the twenty twenty three budget be amended for the attached document, and to accept the December twenty twenty three budget sheet and income expense financial report to authorize funds expended to the operating of the city departments.
I'm making the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call please. Chris Wood? Karen Brady? Jimmy Clark? And Alan Moore, all approved. Okay. Now then, I put, I gave y'all all a budget, proposed budget, and I have since worked on this a bunch, so there's quite a few changes in there. I broke stuff out in the budget, because we told everybody we were gonna put, ten thousand dollars, they don't control, ten thousand dollars in, uh,
Parks.
Parks, I was gonna put, lady in the fire department, and I was gonna fund three officers, and in the budget, you're funding three officers. And we raised their salary a little more than the other people did, because I tried to get them compared, we're, we're spot on with what Murvisboro and Pa County is paying their, not their heads of the departments, we didn't, Greg's not getting that, because it's about a ten thousand dollar bump for that, then in Murvisboro with the county and the city. He got a two thousand dollar bump to be in chief, we dropped the salaries after, we shouldn't be losing the officers. And then in the budget, you got, uh, you got sixteen hours of part time too, that's in the budget. Plus, the three officers. And if you look through the budget there, we didn't ever have it broken down this way. If you look on the first couple sheets, you gotta put, you got police, fire, general fund, and then down there at the bottom, you've got to put together, that's where you've got to balance. Our incomes projected be five twenty five, one thirty three, eighty, expenses five nineteen, one eighty six, thirty seven, in all those departments, and actually that's put, you got, you broke out, uh, the money for the, uh, parks and the money for the animal shelter is broke out, if you look on it in the budget, those are broke out too. That's actually all coming out of city general, but that way, anybody's got a question about it, they can look at it and see.
There's nothing on the animal control, or if it says it's total.
Should, well, I don't know what the expenses are. So, I put down the money in the budget, we don't have it broke out, I don't, I don't want to put down for expenses, because we never paid it this way, I don't want to put down. Well, and that'll be filled in as we go through the year, the money's there, and, yeah. But I didn't know how to put it, I don't have any idea what the salaries are.
Well, how are we paying them around there?
We're paying strictly the animal control and general fund as a bulk.
No, I mean, what are we doing, like, we're, you doing like you used to do whenever I was doing, about eight hours a week, or what?
Um, salaries?
Yeah.
Okay, he does a lot of different things, so we're taking three hours a week. And I just cut the check, you can look at that right here, three hours a week times fifty two weeks in a year, and multiply that times his salary, plus the five in med that we paid on it, and we're reimbursing that to sanitation, as the department.
So, all he's doing is three hours a week?
That's what we're paying him, that's what they decided to pay him this time.
That's why I have to guess, we gotta spend a lot more than that. But, if you look over there, I just put the income in, and, and the, uh, expenses will, you got twenty six thousand three hundred seventy dollars from what we spent last year, plus ten thousand dollars.
No, I, I get the gist of it, I'm just, I don't know.
We got it, I don't know what they are, because we haven't, they're actually broke out, so I didn't know what numbers to put in there, other than make sure the money.
I get the concept, I just thought it sounded funny.
It does. But I don't know what to put in there, I mean, I don't, we're gonna, that'll be filled in as the year goes on.
Yeah, I wouldn't make a decision on having the hours a week, I want them to work. But it's gonna pull down your budget.
Just like the parking, we paid six thousand dollar utility bills last year.
It should take more than three hours a week to clean the place, twice a day.
We have volunteers that actually do that.
He has volunteers that do that.
Yeah, it, it's the recipe, he does the work, and when he can, he shows up, and it is about three hours a week.
And I have had a lot of community service support, that have to love it, it's been during the year.
But, I mean, that's why it's probably not filled in there, because it is, right now, it's not what it should be, if you.
Well, she just, she just puts it in one line before, and then we go on, it broke out, so I put it in there for it to break it out, and it started being broke out every monthly, so, that's the year, it's certainly been done that way, but they're gonna break it out. And I don't, I don't know where to guess to put the money. But we'll put the money where it gets spent, you'll see it.
And it'll change, probably, you know?
Same thing in parks, the only thing we're paying out of parks last year, which is wrong, because we've got people mowing and all that stuff, was six thousand dollar utility bills, that's all we, the water and service, some other department paid their wage, and that's not right, but anyway. But you've got fourteen thousand four hundred dollars in there, because you've got to have that ten percent holdback, so. We put ten thousand dollars in there, but you got, you're gonna spend ninety thousand, and then on the six thousand, you gotta take the ten percent out of that too, so.
I think if we have a person that was doing the parks and the animal control together, would that be a position for someone if they did both of those things, or it's still not enough?
Well, right now, we're, I'm spending all the budget labor that I've got, except, I've got one slot this night. I've got one slot open that we don't kind of fill, and as long as I'm having to get TJ to do the heavy lifting, probably I won't fill it, unless y'all tell me I got to. Because I'm having to hire an outside contractor to do all the heavy work at the water plant and service plant, and all the electronics and.
That's a good price too, I mean, he is.
So, I'm probably not gonna fill that position unless y'all tell me I got to, but it's in the budget. If somebody great comes along, and we think can do that kind of work, we may hire, the salary's in the budget though.
I tell you, I tell you something, it was fixed to be faced, and probably, I don't know when, but it's coming down the back, but when the mill, when the mill is starting out, I don't know what I'm not down with, but when the mill's starting out, some of the salaries are starting out at, Ireland, we're gonna be faced with amending the budget at some point, it's just inevitable, you know?
We, we have the grand salaries quite good.
We have adjusted, but I'm just saying it's, it's inevitable. Of course, you know, it's a lot of perks, and you get a lot of time off, and you gotta look at the benefits package and all that, so. It's, you know, you gotta weigh it all together, but I'm just saying on the surface, we're probably gonna be faced with that, just. One thing, Billy, I would like to know is, uh, the city of Glenwood, people stepped up and helped us pass the reallocation uh, thing, and was, we were gonna be in dire straits if we didn't get it back, and one of the things that I thought about was trying to improve that carrying around, I don't know more about than I do, of course, on the dogs and such, but is, uh, our parks, is I'd like to see us make good on our, on our, some of our promises, to try to improve our parks where they were, what I'd like to see us do at some point, is, there's someone, I can't, what Carrie's saying, but I, I would say, well, I advise if someone that utilized the park on the regular basis, maybe work out some kind of deal with them where we paid them so much in mind, and said, hey, we're gonna give you jurisdiction over this park, you know, it's your job to lock it at night, unlike in the morning, you know, if you need some call us, and needs this, need a tennis net, call us, you know, and try to work out something with a senior or someone that could use some of that income that was there, that would be looking out after. You know, that's something that option that we have to explore, and it might be the right person that's there every day anyway, and man, I wish I had a billion tools like that.
Yeah, I know we got some complaints on our parks last year about how bad they were, but it was stretched thin.
Well, when you're sitting on the, when I'm sitting on the council, and I, I don't want to rub my kids off there, and, you know, just looking at it, you know, and it's fine to some degree, but there's room for improvement. But we haven't had the money until Glenwood accepted the voluntary reallocation, we haven't had the ability to really do anything. And like Billy said, you know, six thousand a year, you can do much of that, and what's that, a hundred and ten dollars a week?
That's why we need to be somebody that have like wonderful, if it was like animal control and parks together.
That's another problem, that's what we do with everybody, and when we get, one person does sewer and wastewater and everything, you know what I mean?
Right.
I mean, it almost needs to be, to have just two jobs or something where they can focus on that, you know?
Right, just animal control.
Stress between everywhere else.
And that, and control parks, water streets, you know?
Park department, and everyone else. Miss Brandon, where, where in here, or Billy, or where we are, but where's the money in here that, that's all the fiction that comes off of? Where is it?
That's it.
It's not, I mean, I know it's here, but nine two thousand, but it's not.
That's correct.
So, that's where it's at?
Yes, that's the, that's the previous.
So, that's fees, that means a fee, okay.
Carrie, one thing I was thinking on this park was, on a subcontract style deal where you, we made a deal with a senior, said, we'll give you X number of dollars a year to do such and such, you know, and review it every quarter and see if you want to continue on, you know, do it on a day, just see how it works, you know? So, like, you know, we're, we wouldn't be under the obligation of all the, the, you know, the PICA and the block fee and the, you know, that type of thing.
On parks, if you look at that, because we paid it last year at six thousand dollars, it was in city general's money, so I moved six thousand dollars from franchise tax, and then the ten thousand dollars from the sales tax, so you've got six thousand dollars less than franchise tax, that's all that's gonna work, but that way it's pulled into that account. You paid it anyway last year, it was just paid all through city general, and this is still gonna be city general, but y'all wanted it broke out, so I got it broke out.
Well, and I know that, uh, unified Glenwood is talking about projects for parks, but they don't want to put the money into it if we're not gonna have somebody caring for it. You know, it's hard to invest money into parks that aren't gonna be cared for, you know?
So, we're doing a lot of work out the parks, but you got a lot of vandalism in the parks, where people tear up their own park. When you go up there to the park, and you tear the lavatory off the wall, and take a sled gear to break it, it's their lavatory, it's not, it's not my lavatory, it's their lavatory.
There's always gonna be criminal activity like that unless you have someone checking and going frequently to the place of their job.
But that's all, we don't get anything damaged sunlight to sunlight, it's all after dark. You're not gonna have somebody sitting up there at one or two o'clock in the morning, that's when the damage is coming. Some kid that shouldn't be out there, and is out there, and we don't have police that's got time to sit up there and just.
What about if they took the approach of, if the church group or something, they, they signed the park out from six in the evening until ten o'clock at night, and they'd be responsible for that? In other words, because I know a lot of church groups that would love you to do functions at the park, you know, and they, they're like, okay, we're gonna play softball this evening, or we're gonna do, you know, uh, maybe we could look at something like that, you know? Maybe we could look at something like that, you know, that might be a work order, you know?
Is it not shut down at dark?
Yeah.
Like they say, maybe give them an option. Do we not lock the doors? They're not like just...
They're not locked or, no, I don't think they are the group.
No, they were at one time. We were locking them. They had to lock them at dark and then we would open them in the morning.
Like, they're shutting down at dark anyway. Go ahead and lock that. Then maybe we stop a lot of the...
Well, it's a bad ventilation. We do say... Lock the doors, that's fine. I mean, it's...
Basically, you don't have mirrors at the rest area, because you got certain wise idiots. I'm still...
Hey, uh, Greg, I got a question. This Grant, Police Jag, what is that? Which brand is that?
Do I know?
Police Jag Grant?
That's for supporting Jag Grant. Yeah, that's, we, we've used it this year, my radios.
That's, that's, okay, supply one.
We've got several grants that weren't in the budget in the police department. You just got a check in from a fifty thousand dollar, got a check in today, it wasn't in the budget. Uh, we're gonna grant for body cams and a new recording system where when they pull up front out here, they're not going to have to take their... It's gonna put their recordings automatically in, officer, whatever you've got recorded on the car dash or whatever you've got recorded on his, uh... It is personal body cam. That'll all be backed up automatically. The police officer has no choice. It's just gonna, it's gonna back it up when they pull in. Up here at City Hall when they get all that even. And that's in that fifty thousand dollar grant that we got. The, we got the money part, the equipment's coming in, but it's uninstalled. It's gonna really put a strain on the street budget. We moved this other money, because we've always had money to do a hundred thousand dollars worth of payment a year. That's gone. When we move the money to give it to another departments, that money's gone.
Billy, one thing, we just got a lot, we, we was blessed with some grants that would help us do a lot of stuff up pretty shake. I will have to add that.
But, we'll get, we should get that, we're not gonna get it this year, but we should get the, uh, uh, paving grant next year, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We did that. And we did get the five hundred thousand dollar grant to do, to get Mountain D Road fixed. And that's gonna be a big deal.
I also don't know what the tax rate is gonna be next year.
Hopefully, that's gonna pick up.
Sure. If that picks up, then that'll go, that'll start having...
Brandon, the utilities on the sewer, is that including the water bill too?
Yes.
That's what I couldn't... If we not, please look into getting the water circulate back and using the water that you're treating. And use it to, see what I'm saying? Like we used to have it in the... That's gonna cut down the utilities there.
At the sewer plant?
Yes. So, we recycle, we recycle the water. So, as you treated it, we had a pump sitting down there. That could, you would use that water to spray down and clean your clarifiers and stuff like that. You just recycle the water. You already treated it, now you recycle. That way you didn't have to pay a water bill. So, you use city water bill. You just use the water you already treated.
That you send in the river.
Correct.
I just gotta get all that thing.
Is there any way we can buy water from a cheaper entity than the...
Yeah.
The sewer plant though, it's got water. Who got all the pumps in the unit? Just turn it off. It's all there. I just don't get it back.
You guys are all, last year.
You'll have to buy a new pump soon on that, I'm sure, but...
If they said, well, if you will.
That makes perfect sense because of the spot he's talking about. I was down there when I get, got the chair to that plant. You know, you go down there with that water right before it goes back into the river. In fact, we got riverfront, you're right downstream, not too far. Uh, but that water, if you were just out hiking, uh, when that thing's been exposed to, you would literally think it was a spring inside the mountain. Like beautiful water coming out there. And so, it's, it's only like gray water, I'm kidding you.
No, water lays into the river thing, and certainly it's good water.
Yeah, it's good water.
If you're looking at, uh... You left the mountain line off of there. Left on income, I don't have income, so I gotta be able to, gotta be able to expense that. The, on it, okay, in street, in sidewalk, street, there's five hundred ninety-three dollars and four hundred twenty-two seventy-seven in there. The budget will not balance if you put the full amount in there. So, next year, we'll have to pick up a hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. If you love to be black sheep, that's what will have to be picked up in next year's budget. This budget will not be done this year anyway. So, we'll find a part of it this year and we'll find a part of it next year. So...
Am I not gonna use the sidewalk?
Yes. And we're gonna lock a hundred, with the five ninety-three, the five hundred thousand dollar grant, we got ninety-three thousand, four hundred twenty-two, uh, seventy-seven right now to put in there. Uh, we may amend that budget if there's any money in street left to try to get that all up. And then you'll spend that money, you know, deficit spending the year the project actually comes up, but you gotta get in your budget somewhere. And we're locking a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, having everything on that budget. Just so you know.
Can you move the sidewalk for my service?
Yes. We have applied for that and to put a three foot throw, plus eighteen inch throw. It's gonna back up your yard a little bit. We're gonna try to get that wider so we can be on safer coming down through there. That's all purpose. That's all purpose of doing an equity on that side is to try to get the road wider. Because it's narrow. When two big semis come down through there, it's narrow.
Semis should pass in each other. One of them will need to, one of them has to pull up on the side.
Yeah. That's why we're trying to do this. It's gonna, you'll actually have about four foot more road than you had when you threw it. It'll be concrete instead of asphalt. But, that's, that's why we get it. And they approved the project that way. So, Andy didn't think that approved the project when they're doing that. And I asked them to submit it that way. Because they didn't argue with it, so...
That's four feet out of the road.
Sure.
That's four feet out of the road.
Yep. All right. Did, uh, you have some questions on the budget?
I do. I do have some questions. Um, and for the sake of the video, I'll introduce myself. My name is Rhonda Elizar and I am a citizen of Greenwood. Um, and my comments are just gonna be comments. I do have a couple of questions, but for the most part, it's just comments. Um, first of all, a big thank you for the city water employees and others that worked so diligently to get our water back up and running last week. Uh, we appreciate you. Okay? My first comment is about insurance and we've been talking, we in, in, we've been talking about insurance. And, um, I understand that the number in the budget for the twenty twenty-four, uh, insurance lines and they're, uh, divided by departments. And it's really just an estimate of the premiums, uh, for the adjusted values on the property, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, really, this is just a comment. So, when the policy, insurance policies are adjusted, there will be an additional premium. We'll pay that off the twenty twenty-four budget. But, when it comes up for renewal, it's just like when you add a car or delete a car. You, you pay the money for the end, till the end of the policy period for your new vehicle. Well, then the renewal is gonna catch up with you and you've gotta pay that higher price on the renewal. So, with that being said, we may see a deficit on the insurance line at year end, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, I just wanted to make sure I was clear with that, because that's how insurance works.
I don't have the amount, they, the, they've already just... And we are insured for the amount that we were insured for with the discipline, but no co-insurance now, which is a much better insurance than co-insurance was. And we've got, if we have a ten million dollar loss, that's what we're insured for, we'll get ten million dollars when something comes through. If we need twenty-six million dollars, we're still uncovering. And they're, they're re, they've got, they've sent an auditor down here and he's done everything. And he has not got back with us. Really want to have that done before the end of the year. But, he has not got back with us. Our premium was a lot cheaper than we had. And there's some money there, but in the budget, I just put what I thought. Um, I kinda guessed at what, uh, the premium value is gonna be on all of our properties, because the guy was pretty open with us when he was around. So, I wrote the numbers down and we put those down. I think we're pretty close before we got the budget. I'll know that when he gets back with us. So, we don't have that audit back yet. The city of Greenwood is way, way, way under insured if we have a loss. Sewer plant's got six hundred thousand dollars. That's a ten million dollar facility sitting down there. And so, if we, a tornado come through like it did at Derek's, you wipe out a ten million dollar facility, we got six hundred thousand dollars to be covered. That's not good. But, we're working on getting that fixed. And we're moving as fast as we can move. And we can't make the insurance company... They did find us at the old policy amounts with no co-insurance. So, we're bound at that amount. And then once quicker they get that, we need to pay, Brandon, that premium was due in November. What happened? We paid it. So, we need to pay from now to November, which is almost a full year. And then in November, we could be hit with next year's insurance premium. But, there's more money in there, because we've already paid part of the money and the full amount that we think it's gonna be is in the budget. So, you won't use all of that money, but you will be sure.
Okay. Okay. So, my next topic is, and thank you for clarifying that, is streets. Um, for those of you who do not know, my husband's an architect and he did watch the meeting. He watches every Greenwood meeting. He watched it last, uh, for December. And he had some questions. So, he was asking me a thousand and one questions. And I was like, I have no idea. So, um, you know, he was all, asking me about Americans with Disabilities Acts and, and highway departments and all that, because he knows what he's doing with that. So, I didn't have an answer, but Mayor Flyler, uh, was willing to meet with both of us. So, my husband could actually look at the plans and look at things like bid specs and all that other good stuff. Um, and thank you again for spending a couple of hours with us. I know that your time is very valuable. So, in that meeting, it's, it's very clear, and, and I may not be correct on this number, but it's about forty-seven thousand dollars, um, that was brought up in the December meeting. But, it's very clear that this work was not included in the original plan of bid process, but it still has to be done to be in compliance. So, from what I gather, and correct me if I'm wrong, the prior administration didn't include some items that needed to be done when they formed it out to Franks to actually do the drawings and then send to contractors for bids. So, um, Franks, Al Franks, didn't include that portion of the work in his drawings, because they weren't requested to draw those plans. And as a result, the portion of that work wasn't bid out to contractors. Therefore, the contractors didn't perform this work. Now, my question is, and it's not really a question, just a statement, how can an engineer or contractor do work that they were never asked to do? How can a contractor work off of several plans that doesn't include work? So, where we are today, as a result of a highway inspection, highway department inspection, is that this work has to be done for compliance. So, it's my understanding that the forty-seven thousand or so will come from a street reserve account, right, Billy?
If it ended up being that amount, because we had not agreed on his number. The, you know, and the council told me that we're only gonna pay what's in the bid. Like, I'm not looking at the bid. If it's two hundred dollars a square foot for the concrete, just throw a number out there. I'm not looking at the bid. They're gonna get paid what's in their bid that they got on the job. They're gonna get paid that number more. So, we're not going, unless there's way more work to do than I don't think there is. But, we're gonna pay them for unit price, just like their own contract for. We're not paying for mobilization again and all that stuff. We're not doing that. Because they're gonna be back, they gotta come back up here and redo about eighty percent of these income grants anyway. They got them all wrong. So, and that's on them. That's not on us.
Right. So, these, these, what I'm talking about is not, is, is independent of the, what the contractor messed up. That's something different.
That's different, yes.
Right. What I'm talking about is, are the items that were required of us that were never put in the bid specs in the first place. They were never in the drawings from Franks to get to a contractor to do a bid. So, I'm coming here to you to ask the council to consider, to consider that in my, uh, uh, meeting with Billy and understanding and, and looking at the, the, the actual drawings. And I encourage you to look at the drawings if, if you question that. Uh, but I do, uh, would, I am asking for the council to, to consider that whenever you vote to be able to get us in compliance. So...
That work is not in the budget.
So, that would come from the budget.
Wasn't they wanting, wasn't they wanting paper hotels, paper...
We're not doing any of that. We're paying for the line out, the only thing.
I think that's where it went kinda crazy, because they was wanting that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I think that was...
Eight thousand dollars worth of, of product.
Yeah.
Probably something down the road to the labor.
They're gonna get paid what's in their contract. Like, if they do a foot of curb, whatever their original contract says curb is. If that's a hundred dollars, they're gonna get paid a hundred dollars a foot. That's what they're gonna get paid. They're not gonna get that forty-seven thousand dollars the way they built it. I guess you could get the forty-seven thousand dollars if they, I don't think there's that much stuff to be redone out there, but they're gonna be units just like was in the contract or what they've already bid with demo and everything in there. So, that's why they're gonna pay that.
Yeah, I, this is independent of what they have to fix. And I agree with you. They shouldn't be paying for Dean and hotels and all that. But, this is independent. This is the work that should, should have been done, but were never in the drawings, but never got to the contract.
I'm with you. What they sent us was, the, the, the bid looked pencil well. It just, it's been, it is looking, it looks great.
So, anyway, so, so that's, you know, again, I wanted to thank Billy for meeting with us and be going through that, because it was, it's quite a process to look through all that. So, my last comment about streets is, you know, I'm gonna say I'm disappointed that the tax reallocation, as a result of that, the street funding is a lot less than it used to be prior to that vote, okay? Um, and are there, the, the question is, are there any considerations in the twenty-four budget to absorb that loss in funding of the streets? The, the, are we just gonna, and I know that we're in line for some grants, but that would come the next year.
No, that money that we're spending, that money that we reallocated to other departments, that's just gone from the street department. It'll never be back there. We're, the street department won't flourish and be able to do all the paving that we're doing. We'll still do some every year. But, instead of two, three hundred thousand dollars a year, we'll be doing a hundred thousand dollars a year.
But, we have the ability to, if, if we have a problem that needs to be fixed, we'll have the ability to move it around more so. See, that was what we ran into, was we weren't able to, we weren't able to fix the problem in front of us. We were able to, you know, fix some hypothetical problems that might occur ten years from now, when you got an obvious problem in front of you. And so, that gave us a little bit of leeway. So, I mean, I, I ain't disagree with Billy, but sure, if, if, if we have to do something, we're gonna wind up doing it. We can amend the budget every month if we have to, to fix our stuff.
Let everything else fall apart.
That's correct.
Because streets need to have so much money, you know? If we have a hundred thousand dollars a year and sacrifice everything else, you know, we have to do other things besides just water sewer streets.
Yeah, they didn't, re-vote, reallocate the sales tax. They didn't give us any more money. It just made it where we could, uh, try to keep the police department with three officers in it. Money in animal control, a little bit of money in parks that we didn't have, so...
Right. The way that it was written, you could only use it for certain things and how it's been in, so...
I'm still disappointed about the streets, so that...
Well, I'm very disappointed about the streets, but we couldn't do any, I mean, people see, and I'm, I'm with them on it, they wanna see three officers be here. They, and them would need more than three officers, but we're not, the budget, if we don't move that money, the budget won't support the two officers. It's just not there. And so, uh, we had to, I'm glad we did what we did. It's gonna hurt the street department a little bit. And if you also look at your income on the water this year, it looks like water park was filthy rich. Because it's gonna have four hundred thousand more income in it this year than expenses. But, you gotta remember, we got two no payments coming up. That's not even budget. And that money is all, we reallocated all that money to take care of those two projects. So, we're not gonna have to ask the voters again. The seven million dollar work we gotta do, the money's already sitting there to pay that. And we'll have to vote on subordinances and all that. But, we won't have to elect the voter and get that redone. So, if you look at the water department income this year, it's gonna look like, well, they done so much money, but we don't have those two projects though.
So, there is, there is a street reserve fund, right? So there is, there is a street reserve fund, right?
There's a million, over a million dollars.
So that's a good point. So, okay, so the, my, my third comment is about the city employee raises. And this was mentioned in the November twenty seventh council meeting at minute mark forty-six, twenty-two. And I do receive, see that reflected in the twenty-four proposed budget. So I do believe that the, the raises for city employees is well overdue with the economy, with the economy the way it is. So I don't disagree with that at all. I think it's, like I said, well overdue. What I'm asking here is for total transparency. And I would ask that there, if there are any on the council that may have a family member that works for the city, that they either recuse himself from the vote of budget that includes the raise or give full disclosure of relationships. A voting yes would be fiduciarily advantageous to an immediate family member. I understand that recusing from voting for or against the twenty-four budget affects more than just this one line item. But what I'm asking for is full transparency to the public and if there are any relationships from the council to employees. Now, I know, this, I'm not saying there's nepotism because it's not, because it's not a direct report. I get that. But I do think that if, if we have council that has city employees and they're voting on those raises, that it should be disclosed to the public.
We don't, we don't, we don't control the races. That's the mayor.
You vote on the budget.
Yeah, he just puts it in. We don't see who they are. He just puts in their salaries. We don't see what they make.
They can.
We can if we want it, but he just proposes it, wages, or he, how's it, I gotta look at it.
I agree with you on the transparency.
I agree with that. I'm, I'm just saying.
I don't have to know what it is. I think it's well deserved.
He just puts in their, uh, what's the word, what's the salary.
Right. You know, right. I just wanna know if there's any relationship.
I mean, that's fine. If you're gonna recuse myself, I can. I, everybody knows that I accused my daughter-in-law. You know what I mean? And that's, that's not a big deal if you would like me to recuse myself on that.
I'm just saying full disclosure. I'm saying full disclosure.
I just mean, except for the police department. And it's, the goal of looking at the budget, there's a sheet in there with how much money's paid to each department's salaries. I don't have the individual names for them.
No, because you can't.
But.
Yeah, I did. Didn't have, didn't have.
But, uh, the police department got more than a five percent raise because we were way out of line in the payments. And, but all the rest of the city employees got a five percent, run by a five percent pay raise.
Hey, I will say this, Billy. On the refusal, I've stated this quite a bit, uh, actually, quite a lot, but, because I won't read it from the things right now, but of the refusal, the way I understand it is that a person recuses herself, the, the decision to recuse is given to the person, is the only person that makes that decision is the person that's voting if they feel like that they cannot be even. If they feel like they're conflicted, they refuse themselves, like a judge or whatever. If, but only if there's no set law that tells you, you must refuse yourself. When my wife, when they were voting on my wife from there, I didn't refuse myself, but I wouldn't have had to, but I did.
So I'm just talking about for the sake of transparency. I mean, if you remember, uh, Mayor Flyler excused himself from the room entirely when the council voted on Flyler's as a vendor, and he didn't have to do that, but he, he wanted to avoid the look of impropriety.
Right.
And that's what it's all about. It's total transparency here. That's.
Well, I had no, I mean, I had no idea what the raise was gonna be for city employees.
No, not that, not that what it's gonna be because they deserve it. Every, they deserve that. It's been long coming. I just think that for transparency, do we have any council members who have family members that are employees?
I presented the budget, and if y'all wanna amend anything, then you don't do that tonight. And I did make changes. There's a lot of changes in this from the budget I gave you because we're not getting a hundred fifty thousand dollar paving project grant, so I don't even put that in the budget. We did get the project for the sidewalk, so that's in the budget. And we got the thirty-five thousand dollar comp grant, so I raised the hours from ten to sixteen for part-time two. So this year, we'll have three police officers plus sixteen hours a week of part-time two. And unless y'all take that out, that's y'all's call. Because all I knew is for this budget. And really, y'all were supposed to do these amendments in this, but I did them. So we, hopefully, if y'all agree with them, we can move on tonight and approve it. If there's something in there y'all don't like, y'all need to, y'all, this is y'all's budget and we'll vote on what y'all tell us to. The other thing we have spent in this budget, we bought that skid steer. There's a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for equipment and we bought that, uh, Dozer blade for the skid steer. That was six thousand. So we spent fifty-six thousand dollars of the, of the equipment money that's in the budget this year already.
So really, it's not about the amount. It's transparency. That's all it is. So there is a family member that is an employee, right? Okay. So, um, my next thing is, my next comment about pay is council members' pay. Currently, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no payment to council members, right?
Correct.
Is there current, is there some old city ordinance that could allow for that? Or, I mean?
The, the problem with that is, just like paying the mayor four hundred dollars, you get what, two fifty?
Two fifty-six.
Yeah.
The problem, you know, that's just like this week. I, when it felt very freezing, I bought three meals for all the boys out of my pocket. I spent more than my four hundred dollars buying three meals for, for when we get the waterline fixed. And I didn't turn that back in the city. We don't have the money, if you, if you start paying salaries more than four hundred dollars to the mayor and more than two fifty-six there and start paying the council something, what are you gonna take away from in a budget? You're gonna take away police. That's, I mean, that's really the only variable that's in city general that you can move that out of, right? Well, you could take some money away from the fire department, put it in the fire department like we did for five years here. I mean, you could do that if, and if the council wants to do that. I'm there for, I'll produce y'all with two more budgets. I will never put a pay raise for the council, the mayor, or the recorder treasurer.
Council don't get paid.
As long as you don't. And I, and I'd get four hundred dollars. And I'm there. If the council can figure out, if somebody can figure out a way to pay it, it'd be nice if they were paying for dinner job, because it's, but it's, you know, when I was on the council years ago, we abolished the salary. They were paying us thirty dollars a month. You know, people were thinking, we're getting paid. And I said, that is a crock of bull. I'd rather this do as community service and be done with.
Right.
And we abolished the salary for the council. It was, was it thirty or forty-five dollars a month?
No, I mean, they ended up being sixty. Y'all were getting sixty a month.
But anyway, we took, we took that away and, uh, if we could, you know, if you could find some money, it would be nice. To me, the council ought to be paid. They got a lot of expense in it.
Right.
I've got a lot of expense in it.
I mean, I'm just thinking like maybe, and I know that twenty twenty-four budget's gonna be tight, but, you know, once we see taxes, like Ryan mentioned, like what our taxes are gonna be, kind of be acclimated to the twenty-four budget. I would, and I'm just bringing this up, just, you know, from what I see, council members typically get paid, and this is just an average that I did a little research on, a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting and then seventy-five dollars for each special meeting. And then the recorder treasurer would get paid per meeting too, to exceed this two hundred fifty dollars. But, and I get that some of the council members perform this as a civic duty. But if there were to be some monies that could be found and you did make that money, then put it in your account and, you know, increase your tide or donate it to somewhere. But the fact of the matter is, is I understand that the time that you invest as a council member, I've been there, and, uh, you know, you're spending time away from your families. You're here tonight, prep time for meetings, and then not to mention time spent with citizens that come and ask you questions all the time. That's, that's a heck of a lot of time. And I just, I wanna acknowledge that because it's important, the work that you do, but I also would like to keep in the back of the mind that if there are some opportunities to fund payment of council, I'd like to see that. And, and the mayor works, you know, four hundred dollars a month? I mean, I don't know how he does that. I don't know how Flyler does that because it, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of time just preparing the budget and all that good stuff. So I'm just kind of planting the seed because I know that twenty twenty-four is not gonna allow that, but I'll be the one that brings it up when we talk through twenty twenty-five because I know how important your jobs are.
It's important if we can just figure out a way to get some money. But I get every, I don't, I think the council will agree that if we get every, the police department funded, the fire department funded, I don't think y'all gonna vote yourselves a pay raise in. We don't have the money to do that.
The only way I'd ever vote for a pay raise, I believe, not hold myself to it, for a pay at all, would be to vote for the incumbent councilperson or citizen on the seat.
There you go.
That'd be the only fair way to do it.
Well, for instance, you can't take away the mayor's salary and the recorder treasurer's salary after you run. You can't come in there and take that away. You give him a raise, but you can't, you can't take away, that's the way you'd have to do it. You can't, you can't take away, you can't take away something that he runs. Oh, I run for mayor. Of course, I got a point. I didn't run. I got, but, I'm gonna, I need that four hundred dollars a month. That's why I'm running. You can't take that away. Ryan's got over here, he's making two hundred fifty-six bucks. He's ready to get rich too. But.
I mean, you know, and I knew, I knew that, that none of y'all would probably bring that up, but it is, it is important and, and, and just acknowledging that. So that's, that's for pay. And then my last comment is about animal control. And the ten thousand dollars in the twenty-four budget, I see that, that was mentioned in the November twenty-seventh meeting. And I'm happy about that because that's one of the things I mentioned in the very start is I like, I like that. And, um, I'm not gonna look at gift cards in the mouth, but that's not a lot of money considering the stray, the stray pet population problem that exists in Glenwood. Just in this freeze, I've taken in a dog because somebody left him out freezing and I'm, I'm just not gonna do that. So my question is, i- is that money kept in the city or do we take that? And, and the reason I'm asking is because there are three nonprofits that I see on Facebook. And, and it kind of gets confusing as to where to go, who to go, who to call. Because sometimes I see they reach out to Councilwoman Brady and then sometimes to the city and then sometimes, and I just found this one a couple of days ago, Nova's Reason Dog Rescue. So it says there are dog rescue in Glenwood, so it kind of gets confusing. Then you have Spots out there too. So does, could y'all clarify if Spots still exist, what they're doing or?
I'll take this one. Um, Spots retired, over the hood for fourteen years. Um, they continue to do a spay and neuter clinic. They do two or three clinics a year. They run it out of the county fairgrounds. Um, they still have equipment over at the animal control building and they have a locked storage container that's actually the city's. The city allows them to use it. They pick up their equipment. They do a spay and neuter clinic. That's the only involvement they have. As far as us as a shelter, my wife and I created a shelter after Spots decided to retire. Um, in order to help this community out, we actually get no money whatsoever from the city. There's not a dime. Actually, that two hundred fifty-six dollars I make a month probably goes to feeding the dogs. The city themselves buy the adult dog food, okay, at the shelter. We buy all the puppy food. We do all the euthanizations, or not euthanizations, all the vaccinations, all the rabies shots, all the spay and neuters. We provide that. The city doesn't provide that. That's us as a shelter. There are a couple of other shelters. Nova's one of them that just now is starting to help work with us. Um, she's talking about creating a shelter more procure. Hopefully, she does. We have, what, seventeen dogs at our house alone. So, at our house, let alone the dogs at the shelter. I don't know if people think it's a lucrative business being a shelter, but if anybody wants some of these dogs or more, they're welcome to come and get some, honestly. You know, truly, um, we get no funding whatsoever from the city. That pays for the water that's at the animal control building, the electricity at the animal control building, the dog food, and it pays for the animal control guy about seven hours a week. You know, maybe next year it might be three hours a week, but, and that's what it pays for. Um, this increase that we got, hopefully, will allow that animal control guy to be there more than three hours a week. Maybe he'll be there ten hours a week. I don't know.
There's a lot of repair that has to happen.
There is a lot of repair. Um.
The trailer's falling apart. There's holes in the floor. There's holes in the deck.
Everything that has been not taken care of in the past.
The maintenance hasn't happened, so, I mean, you can tour it, you know, let us know. We'll, we'll take you on a tour. If you go step carefully in that building, it will fall through the floor. So it's not safe. And this money probably is gonna have to go to fixing.
Some parts of it, for sure.
Some parts of it, you know, because it's not, it's not safe.
But we have, we have no sane animal control. We have no, we have nothing doing animal control.
I don't choose the dogs that get picked up in the city. That's not how that works. And there's been a lot of talk on Facebook that, you know, our rescue is controls animal control. That's not true. You don't control animal control at all. They, they do their own thing. They pick up the dogs if they feel necessary. They take them to the animal control building. And then it's our volunteers that care for the animals once they're taken in.
Clean the facility, help to get them adopted.
They clean, they feed, they take care of the animals. They walk them, they play with them. That's what our rescue does.
And that's all strictly volunteer, volunteer based. I mean, we're understanding volunteer based.
And animal control asks us to post dogs when they find a stray. So that's why people get very confused because they, they want us to post those dogs so they get seen and people can clean them.
That's maybe one thing that they can put on their website.
You know, and it would help if, if animal control put it on the city website instead of us because it does get very confusing. People do think that we're animal control. We get calls. People, you know, say, come pick up the stray. Well, I can't do that. You know, we can't physically pick up a dog and take it to the city's animal control. Animal control has to do that. You know, but it is, it is confusing and I see how that happens, but.
But the only, one of the only agreements that we have with them is that we won't bring in dogs, you know? We won't bring in dogs to the animal control building. If we ever bring in a dog, really, it comes to our house. So as a shelter, if we bring in a dog, it comes to our house. It doesn't go to the animal control building. And so that's all animal control that does that. They're the ones that write tickets, don't write tickets. That's, that's up to them. You know, we have no say in that.
So how close are we to enforcing some sort of licensure or anything? It costs money. I know.
We're still, we're still working on, on reevaluating the ordinances and stuff like that. That's one of the tasks that we're, we're trying to do, you know, carry as a councilwoman is trying to do in order to, but also have the manpower to enforce it.
Right. To have an animal control person that is enforcing those things, we have to pay somebody more than seven hours a week or three hours a week, whatever it's gonna be for him to do his job. Who's gonna go out there and write tickets to all these people? I mean, the dogs that are loose running out there, their owner shouldn't have a ticket because they're not supposed to be running the streets. But how are we gonna pay somebody to track down their owner, find the dog, catch the dog, track down the owners on three or seven hours, you know, it's not gonna happen. You know, so this is definitely a process. We've gotta start somewhere, you know?
And we're in the very first year of our animal shelter as to where when Spots retired, they were at their fourteenth year, you know? The amount of money that they, uh, got on donations compared to what we get on donations, like I said, we're a hundred percent volunteer based, a hundred percent donation based, you know? So it's very little, you know, um, what we can do. I mean, I did a dog today, got a dog spayed today. I got a dog getting spayed tomorrow. And that's pretty much, our funds are completed. You know, until we get another fundraiser, we did, uh, we cooked food on Monday at the Blue Lily for, you know, for people. Until we do something like that again, we'll be out of money, you know? That's just the way it is.
Well, thanks for clarifying because it, it was getting kind of confusing.
And it does. And it's, it's, it's hard when people ask questions and they don't let you completely finish. You know what I mean? Like, I know that there's been other people in here that have said things and I'm trying to correct that and it just gets shot down. But we have no true affiliation with the animal control building besides we were there to help.
Well, hopefully, this platform, people will watch and.
Yeah, I doubt it.
The, the platform of Facebook really, you know, people put out what they wanna say, whether it's right or wrong, they say it. You know, and then they block you so you can't comment back and say, actually, that's not correct. So then I'm, I'm blocked. I can't see their pages, but people send me what they're saying. You know, and it's incorrect, but yet it's out there and there's really not a lot of people that are standing up and saying, no, that's wrong. You know, so until somebody says, hey, this is not okay, that's not right, you know, it's out there as misinformation. And that causes a huge, a huge problem, the misinformation.
And we're also in the process of trying to build another shelter completely away from the city and we will pull completely out of the city. And that's gonna create its own problem because then the city is gonna have to full-time, not not about full-time, but clean more, take care of the animals more. And that's gonna put a, a burden on the city.
I don't understand it because I, I.
Well, it's, that's the way it's gonna be because.
He should do that.
You know, but.
Clean twice a day. You still pick up animals and still have to take them to the vet. Oh yeah, by the way, I've got a water leak.
Once we, once we pull out of the city completely, that's gonna be up to the city to do that. You know, right now, we're giving a lot of free work, I mean, it's probably close to eight hours a day on average that we give, our volunteers give anyways, a day. Seven days a week, rain or shine, snow, it don't matter, you know, so.
Well, again, thank you for clarifying that, I think that's, um, advantageous to everyone, thank you.
All right, y'all got any more questions on the budgets before we work on, before we approve the budget for next year? You have any questions? Okay, fun part again, councilman, are y'all got any questions?
Well, I'm the employee, we were looking at if there's enough personnel for Animal Control.
Animal Control does not have employees, staff, it comes out of one of the other departments, and you pay it back. You take it three hours, it comes out of three hours, God. You pay three hours, and once a year, you put that money back from. Whether it's free or water, and several of the guys paid for it, good, and you pay that back. So, no, we do not have a person, that's strictly.
You know, because there wasn't anybody for a part of work, and currently this is part of it.
Well, that's not really necessarily true, because they make the money. The department that's got the money, they've been eating it most of the time.
It currently sounds like our exit strategy will is, you know, load them up and take them to another city. Sounds like we're not funded well enough to, to do, you know, if y'all don't like, you know, you said eight hours a day, so that's fifty-six hours a week, the volunteers are chipping in.
That's at least one person, if not.
Yeah, that's a lot, so.
But, alright, so, City of Glenwood, twenty twenty-four budget resolution, resolution twenty-four oh two. A resolution providing for the adopting of the budget for the City of Glenwood, Arkansas for the twelve-month period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Appropriating money for each and every item on the expenditure there, and whereas section two of act number twenty-eight of nineteen fifty-nine provides that the city council shall adopt an annual budget for operation of the city government for the calendar year, and whereas the city council of Glenwood has made a comprehensive study and review of the proposed budget, and whereas it is the opinion of the city council of Glenwood that the schedule and the exhibit of the financial information prepared and reviewed, revealing, uh, anticipated revenue and expenditures for the calendar year appears to be accurate as possible for the budgetary purpose. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the Glen, of Glenwood, Arkansas, section one, this resolution shall be known as the twenty twenty-four budget resolution for the City of Glenwood, Arkansas, for the balance of the twelve-month period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, reflecting estimate revenues and expenditures as hereafter set forth in the twenty twenty-four budget attached containing approximately nine pages. The appropriations made herein include additional pay for holiday and all agents, servants, and employees of City of Glenwood, including but not limited to the uniformed employees as provided by the state of Arkansas. All revenues herein are estimated and subjects to change. Our appropriations are calculated upon available revenues and are also subject to change, section two. Whereas by reason of the fact that the City of Arkansas, or City of Glenwood of Arkansas, are required by law to adopt an annual budget each year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in order to operate the city government. Now, therefore, this resolution being necessary for the preservation of all public peace, health, and safety shall take effect force from after its passage approval.
Do I have a motion to accept resolution twenty-four oh five? I have a motion, Mary, that's second.
I'll say.
Pro call, please.
Okay, so Jimmy and Chris second. And one more.
Well, Carrie Brady.
Aye.
And one more.
Aye.
Chris Moore.
Aye.
And Jimmy Clark.
Okay. This, the next thing, I was expecting the budget, if you look at that grant we've got on the sidewalk project, the pay is there is the cost estimated cost of the project. And break it out, y'all already approved, that that's where the numbers come from, that I'm working within a budget. So, that's just an information sheet on that project. That is not bid, that project is not bid yet, so, it will have to be bid and hoping those numbers are gonna be good. The next two package y'all got, y'all may not wanna get a lot of detail on them. This is the funding that is so far done on the refinance of the Water and Turbines Department. And this is all the paperwork y'all need to go through there, if y'all got any questions on it. This is all the paperwork that ties, the short version of all the paperwork, if you got it all off being booked. This is the short version basically of all the, uh, everything that's going on with the water and turbines that are done today. We still have two to do. And that shows you the, and what sheet shows you the balances of money that's in the departments. Oh, hang on, this is, the next sheet is something else, are y'all good with all of that? There's really nothing to vote on there, that's why y'all voted on it, a lot of meetings before, but this is all the paperwork, the final paperwork coming, that is getting your copy. Okay? The next thing, we are not in compliance with our rental building over there. You read the contract, typical, we're supposed to be providing liability insurance over there, and the city is excluded from that. And so, in my opinion, y'all need to pay the building off and let's go on. And Brenda's got it down there, we owe a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, be done with it, so, right now, if we have a fire over there or destruction of that building, then we'll get another money. And I'm not, I'm not arguing with Randy about that, that's just the way the lease is written. So, we need to get out of that, that's our building, and we need the money for our, if something happens to, not Randy. And we do not have liability insurance over there. Or somebody slipped and fall asleep, he's got four immunity. He does not. He wants that on the building, so you're gonna have to take out another insurance policy if you're not gonna pay the building off. I don't see any need in taking out another twenty thousand dollar insurance policy.
May I ask you a question, have we approached him about waiving his requirement?
He wants that in there, he says, y'all go ahead and give me a rider that says, I'm not liable, we can do that. To me, they just pay it off, if the city wanted it, you got it, we're occupied in it, pay the thing off and move on, we've got the money. I'd, I'd rather not be in an argument if you had a claim. I'm not looking for a building to get destroyed over there. But if something does happen and the building gets destroyed, if we don't get the money, we can't build our building back where we sit there. And that's the way his, he's, that's the way his lease agreement says, he, we pay the premium and he gets the money. So, we're renting a building, we're not leasing. And I'm not arguing with you about it, that's it, I mean, to me, we need to clean this up. And it's gonna cost you a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. That's what you agreed to pay for, two hundred thousand dollars, what you agreed to pay for, you paid thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, and so forth. And we're not in compliance with the lease agreement. And we can't buy liability insurance because the city's tort, it's got tort liability. So, our insurance policy, we gotta cancel that, go buy another policy if you're gonna do that.
Can I make a motion, you just go ahead and pay it off and move on?
I have a motion to pay it off and move on, I have a second, second, any more discussion? Pro call.
Jimmy Clark.
No.
And one more.
Interesting.
Okay.
Chris Moore.
Aye.
Okay, three to one, two.
Alright, Brett has your, Brett's back, we're trying to find, we bought a blade to go on the skid steer where it snowed, and this was ice this time. The city has no equipment to work on roads with. So, I was looking at a salt and, uh, that salt dog is a, uh, sand and salt machine, it costs you fifty-one hundred and thirty-one dollars. And, but Brett's been talking to the state, and they're going more to liquid brine. And do y'all want me to proceed? You're not gonna spend more than that five or six thousand dollars, you get something we can start combating. Bad, and you may not use it for two years, that's the problem with this stuff, you may get it, it may set up there for, but when you get to the beginning, you can't go.
And it works off of a skid steer?
No, that, that brine thing, we're just going back in the trunk and get by. That, Brett thinks we need to go with the liquid, is what the state's going through with and the county's going through with more, we need to do some more talking. So, you might buy a thousand gallon empty tank and pump it up, put a pump on it to, to spray the brine with. Brine better than salt water. They have a little bit of other stuff in it, but we need to do something so people can get out on the streets if it does this, and if we don't have it, and they got it purchased, we, the guys didn't have anything to work with this stuff.
Who sells these right here, I'm sure it's in here.
Uh, snow blowers at Japs.
Does the state still sell very old stuff like this, the van, the van trucks?
Uh, that, that's on the back of the big truck, usually that salt stuff is.
So, does the south hall sell this?
No, this is, he doesn't sell me that, he doesn't sell that. But Brett thinks we may need to look instead of getting this, we may need to do what they do in liquid.
If you do it now, you could pre-treat and then treat afterwards with the same product.
So, we can look at whatever you want me to go to, I'm not looking to spend it, six thousand dollars maybe, if y'all want me to proceed in that manner. So, doing liquid or doing the sand, to me, I want her to do both, but we gotta do something, it's embarrassing to see when we can't take.
The good thing about sand is after the snow's gone, the sand is still there, and that's good and bad. But it's, you know, it, it's not something you'd have to do probably as frequently, but it may be more, uh, it may work better, be more efficient the first round, you know, I really don't know. But sand kinda give you a little.
Where's the cost of the sand, salt mixture versus the brine?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know that all the variables.
I'm gonna get, if y'all are okay with it, we'll work on it, I'll get the highway department, and let them tell me what they're going, because whatever they're doing, they do it more than we do. If we set it, get set up like they are.
But we noticed they went out and pre-treated, fore-did, and then look how quick the highways, I know they work on those, but some spots they weren't even that.
Yeah. So, y'all want me to work on that, that's something we've never had.
One thing that we do need to ask though is, is, uh, find out for sure is, this liquid they're going to, is it a treatment after or a treatment before, which one are we gonna do?
Both.
Okay, so, alright.
It is both, but I'm not, the one I'm more familiar with, I got to looking, was this right here, and then he comes back and talks to me that the state's moving away from salt sand, and they're moving towards the brine. And if y'all want me to proceed.
They're moving away from it, they may have.
It doesn't even look like they have a pump on them, because I drove behind one the other day, it looks like he just grabbed you fat and just lets it.
Somebody made a motion to table us.
Well, if y'all, if y'all want me to do it, I mean, well, within my, a lot of the budget, I just don't wanna do something, I don't like to do stuff without making y'all aware I'm doing it, so. If y'all want me to proceed with it, I'll proceed with it, if y'all don't want to proceed with it, I'm not gonna worry about it. The next thing y'all approve, that Dozer blade, that was twenty-five hundred dollars, that's money in this year's budget, would y'all please accept that? I did a phone call, and everybody agreed to that, but would y'all go ahead and approve that, so it couldn't manage?
I make a motion to approve that.
I'll say it.
Any more?
Wow. Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Moore.
Aye.
And one more.
Aye.
All three.
Okay, the next thing, um, on the list, um, I think Carrie and, and them had looked at that. We've got some strange people, of course, coming into city hall over there to their building, and they're wanting to put cameras up. Sixteen hundred and seventy-two dollars, ninety-seven cents, that's no labor to put them in, that's just strictly the cost of the eight cameras. We're gonna have cameras over here in this building.
Because we moved and there's no police department over there, um, there is money over there, there's constantly being water bills being paid and stuff like that. Um, I, I asked to get the price on the cameras for safety of our employees, for multiple different things, not only just the safety of our employee, but also lawsuits and everything else, you know, someone does fall, whatever, I just think cameras are, are a good thing to have, and we're doing the money.
You're looking, you probably, I don't know, any hours DJ had and hooking all this up, he's gonna run wire, hook the cameras up, you probably looking at.
I'm not against it, but I don't wanna do it till we own the building.
I think it's necessary now, you know.
Well, if y'all want to do the building, we should own the building pretty quick. Cause y'all wanted to buy the building, so we're gonna own the building.
This is my opinion.
We'll own the building.
It was a lease purchase and there wasn't no penalty.
That's all I'm telling you.
Or anything like that. So, it's, and the reason I'm staying is I eat lunch with him once twice a week, so, and I, and, and in full disclosure, I'm not the one, I didn't even know anything about that building deal. That was Carrie Brady, the previous councilwoman, that even brought that up, I didn't even go in there the night they introduced it, so.
But anyway, do y'all want to do the cameras now, or wait? Or do you wanna do the cameras, I mean, it's.
I think we should do the cameras now.
Okay.
I'll say that.
Motion to second to buy the cameras, that's the camera and the switch and the wire, and then the labor will be on top of that.
The labor, I had a camera system installed at one night, offices was just gonna be very similar to that style deal and, and, and hope, but, um, a couple nights later to do it, I had, you know, if it's a wired, a wired system, it's a lot better.
It's gonna be wired, yes, it'll be wired.
Alright, so we have a motion to second, um, Chris Moore.
If he orders the stuff, it'd be a week out and probably a week or two before he even got.
Yeah, it's gonna be a month.
And how fast would it be for us to purchase the building?
Just tell Randy to get the D dre, get the title insurance bond today, that would pay, that's gonna be how quick the title.
I'm agreeing with both sides, I just, I'm just.
I just don't wanna do it till we own it.
I can agree, but I agree with y'all sometimes.
The thing is, I'm gonna fall through, because you got a lease purchase agreement, it can't fall through. Okay. But he got his lease purchase, he's not gonna, don't make him go off on this.
Well, whether we rent it or buy it, we're still handling money every day.
We bought, I'll pay for the cameras myself.
Aye.
Y'all have a motion to second on the floor, we got Chris, Chris and Ryan. Three to one.
Alright, that's all I've got on my list tonight, if you have any other, all your time, if you have.
I'm up, I got one thing I'm gonna say before this, uh, one thing that I'd like to see our city do, and if you watch any news or whatever, I don't feel the news all the time. But I would like, I would like for our council to be in consideration of over the next few days, a few weeks, whatever. Uh, something that give our law enforcement a, uh, guideline as far as people setting up temporary structures. I'm not talking much, camp with the kids in the backyards for a week, for a weekend or a week or whatever. But setting up temporary structures and panhandling in our city limits in front of different places. I, I think that, that it's coming our way, it's gonna be here, I know it ain't gonna happen now, right now, we don't have any. It's a perfect time to get it in place before we do have a target and set up for a lawsuit. What do y'all think about it?
Is, uh, without a plan for like, um, eclipse, if there's people decide they're gonna camp, you know what I mean?
No, we could.
Well, I'm just saying, well, that, they may just put a tent out in your yard and you can't do anything.
No, no, I'm not talking about short term, I'm talking about.
Oh, I'm just saying, they, they may put a tent out in your yard, you can't do anything about it.
You can't do anything about it.
If you don't have government ordinance in place.
I, I, I'm all about getting something in place while we don't have anything cooking that I know of. Or whatever, to get it in place, something that's clean bill or a resolution that states, you know, you'll be warned the second time you're a police front officer, you'll be fined, or however, and let it go from there and just.
What, what are the other cities, Hot Springs or something like that, why do they allow that? Is there a?
Hot Springs did until five years ago, they done it, and you get fig on every corner, that's all rich corner.
Do you know why they allow that?
No, but I'm looking into it.
Okay, cause the city that I came from, we had an ordinance, and then it was something about your freedom of speech or something like that. And they basically allowed them to do it because they had no other choice.
It's their constitutional.
Right. According to state arc.
But there's also like competing traffic, there's all sorts of other things that, that will fall in that, but there, there's something there, because like I said, our city was big on.
There's other cities that have what I'm talking about that, that do have it in place, but I'll give you a, an example. Um, let's say that you're coming down Hot Springs and you pull over and there is a fifteen-year-old kid standing there saying, I'm hungry. You walk and you pull up, your heart smut, you know, smuts you, whatever. You get out a twenty-dollar bill or whatever, and you give it to that kid. Somebody catches that on video. Are you soliciting a minor? Uh, are you paying an older person? You give them some money? Are you, are you sticking something in your car? Are you doing a drug buy? I mean, there's a whole lot of variables that come into that. It's just not, it's not a clean, it's not, it's, it's just, it's just not a good book.
Right, and I agree. I'm just making sure that it's strong enough to where it can be, well, hell, that's what I'm getting at, but, you know, I'm not sure.
If you can buy some ordinances you want us to look at, that'd be the thing. You know, just find some ordinances that some other towns have got and bring it to the council and look at it.
Yeah, and you know, for them to be actually challenged, it'd have to be the right person to take all the way up or whatever, you know, so. Probably for the general public, it would, you know, generally it would solve our problems, I, I do believe. But anyway.
Well, we don't even have a traffic light, so.
No.
You know, they, they've got one stop stand basically. Well, maybe two if they're on the bridge, but.
Yeah.
That's dangerous right there.
I'm not talking about kids raising cookies for money for boys, girls, and guys.
Right, but there have been people that have stood out at the four-way and panhandling.
Right, right.
Well, they did. They actually in Hot Springs, and they, they, they bust them in from Little Rock.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to be honest.
I think how badly though there.
Yep.
We have them in Scotts here out here.
Anyway. Anybody in the audience got anything else you wanna say tonight?
It's my turn.
Your turn again?
I'm like a motion with Jerry.
You have a motion with Jerry? Second?